Good morning, everyone. And we hope that everyone enjoyed their Memorial Day weekend. It was sunny and it was rainy and it was sunny and it was rainy, so. It was all in all, I think it was a pretty good weekend. So we are here today on Tuesday, May 26th for the 20, May 26th, 2020, Jackson County Board of Supervisors meeting. We have several people with us today. I see Kelly here from the media, KMAQ's here. Lisa or Luann, our executive assistant is back here. Lisa's over in her office. Larry McDevitt, Jack Willie, myself, Mike Steinis are your county supervisors and we will start this morning with Clark Schloss.
Before we do that, last week, we had a moment of silence for JC. We had another former county employee that passed away this week. Millie Cop that worked at the Sheriff's Department for quite a number of years. And was a real asset to that department and her funeral is today. So if we could have a moment of silence for Millie.
Thank you, everyone. And I did hear that this morning. I apologize for missing that. Thank you, Jack.
She's a great gal.
Yep, and she's a lot of years of service too.
A great bridge player.
Took some money off you. Well, we'll start with Clark. Clark?
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
And first, I'm going to be interested in is.
And do you have them, Lisa, or who's opening them?
I do, I do have them. So my first bid that I have this morning is from FS Ag Advantage. The bid for LP gas is 89 cents. They did not bid on gasoline or diesel fuel. No bid. They did not bid on either one, gasoline, diesel fuel, number two, winter blend, or the additive. So they only bid on the LP at 89 cents. The next bid that I have is an LP bid. This is from River Valley Energy. Their delivered per gallon price is 99.9 per gallon. And the other bid I have is from River Valley Energy. Their bid is the, for 35,000 gallons, the ethanol blend gasoline is .341. 60,000 gallons of number two diesel fuel for .069. 40,000 gallons of winter blend at .109. And 100,000 gallons of diesel fuel additive at .015. And that's all the bid is.
And they didn't bid an LP then?
River Valley bid both LP and fuel, but Ag Advantage only bid for LP. And we have no bid here from Mulgrew Oil. They must have chose not to.
Okay, so. Okay, I think you asked for Mulgrew Oil, Clark. I think you asked for winter blend or biodiesel. Did you ask for biodiesel? And I had .069 right now.
I did too.
Is that, did you miss that one, Clark?
Jason, would you read the River Valley bid again?
That we never start, we didn't start on River Valley yet.
Yeah, that was just River Valley now.
Yes.
Ag Advantage only bid. Ag Advantage only bid on the LP. They did not bid on anything else. So Ag Advantage, 89 cents.
Could you read?
So then we get to River Valley. 35,000 gallons of the ethanol blend, .341. The number two diesel fuel at .069. The winter blend at .109. And the diesel fuel additive at .015.
Was there anything for biodiesel?
Did you hear that, Lisa?
Where is it at on the, on the bid sheet? On diesel fuel, I see number two, the B5, the winter blend, and the diesel fuel additive. That's the three things that they bid on. Are we missing a bid sheet?
Okay, you said the B5.
B5 is number two diesel fuel.
B5 is in the biodiesel.
Yes.
That's the 60,000 gallons at .069.
Well, it says no. That's.
It was the number two diesel.
Number two regular up on top or?
Number two diesel is, and in parents, it's got B5. That's the 60,000 gallons.
Okay, then it's the biodiesel.
And then there's winter blend underneath it for 4,000 gallons.
Did the regular diesel then?
Would you like me to deliver these over to you?
Because yeah, they were supposed to do separate sheets for. Uh, yeah, we're gonna have to take a look at.
Hang on.
Yeah, Mulgrew hasn't been in the lines two or three times.
There's two different places for.
This is what River Valley sent.
Well, that's been the same price for both, but.
Well, yes, there's number two regular diesel on top and.
These two bids sheets are the same.
Yeah, they're the exact same numbers. They did, yeah. For the bio, you know, the biodiesel field, the three. B5, 60,000 gallons, winter blend, 40,000 diesel fuel additive, 100,000. They're the exact same numbers as the nine.
Oh, on top of.
Yeah, so they're the same. They bid the same. And so we need a motion to basically check the numbers, make sure the eyes are down.
So Advantage FS did not bid any diesel.
Did not bid fuel.
Gasoline.
Just LP.
Okay, and neither did Mulgrew?
Neither did Mulgrew in this.
So we went out, solicited for three bids and we received one?
We received one. Last year, I believe we had two. I don't know why, you know, I managed to sign with big fuel.
Why can't I get in on that LP at 89 cents?
I just had my children.
Lisa, whose envelopes did I hand you?
You handed me.
That would be River Valley.
That is correct. River Valley.
That's fine because that's where your price of charging customers.
Okay, thank you.
It's better than the other ones.
Yeah, but that's for, when does that start, Clark? Does that start in July then?
It doesn't start in July.
We don't know what, eight months is gonna break?
Yeah, they're not gonna get in at this. That's different.
So we need a motion to calculate the bids?
Yeah, that we check the bids and then we'll come back next Tuesday.
Doesn't say we need action. Do we really need action for that? Got a motion in a second to review the fuel bids as presented. All those in favor say aye. Aye opposed, nay. Motion carried.
Okay, next time on utility permits, they haven't set us their fees yet, so we gotta table them again. On that, and then bring us to the driveway permit for Sir Buddy. This would be in the Coca Townships, section 5, 233rd Avenue. On the website, it does meet the site distance requirements. And it's residential, that approved it'd be 8780233rd Avenue or the address.
And you're recommending this?
A motion in a second to approve the interim bid from Sierra Buddy, McCogan Township, section 5, 233rd Avenue. For residential as presented, all those in favor say aye. Aye opposed, nay. Motion carried. And you said both of these for the underground permits, neither one have been submitted or paid?
Paid yet, so until they pay, we don't present them. We listed them on the agenda in case, you know, through the mail or kind of being, but.
Good.
So next week so far, what we have on the agenda is, you know, possible action on the fuel. And that's all we have for now. There's three more questions.
That'll do it.
All righty, thank you.
Any questions for Clark? All right, thank you, Clark.
Okay, my.
Iron Bridge looks good.
Yeah, and just remember, the speed limit out there is empty. You know, I went on there when they, you know, they just got the surface course on there.
Oh, and they rode out to New Road?
Yeah, and let's put it this way, it's way better than it was before. And from Springfield South to 64 when we built it, or the mill course was never better than before Millie.
Good to have that one done.
Okay, technical difficulty. Is Bjorn over there?
It just came back.
Oh, you got it? Oh, there you are. I see you. Okay.
I wanted to make sure my time, my sound was clear off, and it was, but then all of a sudden my camera.
Lisa?
Good morning. I need a motion is needed to approve the minutes of the May 19th, 2020 board proceedings as written by Auditor Smith. And authorize publication in the official newspapers.
Second.
Motion in a second to approve the minutes of the May 19th, 2020 board proceedings are written. All those in favor say aye. Aye opposed, nay. Motion carried.
Motion needed to approve and authorize the auditor's office to issue warrants in the publication of the claims listing in the amount of 115,336 dollars and 85 cents.
Second.
You got a motion in a second to approve and authorize the auditor's office to issue warrants in the amount of 115,336 dollars and 85 cents. Any further discussion? It's kind of refreshing. There was a couple of them in there that I talked to Nathan from Conservation about that he was kind of gonna check into. So they weren't large, they were just, he was gonna check into them, so. All those in favor say aye. Aye opposed, nay. Motion carried.
Motion needed to approve a handwritten warrant for Quoddy at Finance USA for the courthouse mail machine postage for 8,040 dollars.
And that consists of just the postage machine?
That's the whole postage machine. So with all of these ballots that we're mailing out, we were actually capped as far as how much we could use. And Shelley had to call the company and increase our limit. And so that's why we're asking for this handwritten warrant so we can continue with our, with our, well, we're done mailing out right now, but we had used up all of our allocation. So nobody else could use the mail machine if we don't do this.
Motion to approve.
That's good. Well. I got a motion in a second, approve the handwritten warrant to Quoddy at Finance USA for the courthouse mail machine postage account. All those in favor say aye. Aye opposed, nay. Motion carried.
Okay, Lisa, how many ballots did you end up mailing out?
Right now, we've processed 4,214. And we've got, now we'll start with curbside voting and how else we can help the citizens, the voters this coming week now. So we're not done yet. We can still have a busy week. We, like I said, we no longer are allowed by Iowa law to mail out. So now we move into the curbside voting part of voting. So, yeah, the postage going out will be down, but the work coming in, what should go up.
Can you tell me just how that curbside works or tell the citizens how that works a little bit?
Curbside voting normally is used for people that are unable to come into the courthouse for whatever reason. But because of the pandemic this year, the Secretary of State's office is encouraging people that want to vote still. They can come here to the courthouse. They will call us. They will say, my name is Elissa Smith and I would like to vote. We will ask them a series of questions. So when we come out to the car, we have all of the necessary paperwork and ballots for them to sign. We have a clipboard. We will hand them a ballot. They will vote their ballot in the car. And then they will put everything in their envelope and they will seal it. And whoever is waiting on them will bring that ballot back here into the office and we'll process it and they have voted. So they can also, you know, just the main thing is just call us as long as the courthouse still is closed. The doors are not open yet. When they get here, just call us.
Thank you. That's a nice number, I guess, already for a primary like that.
67% of those ballots have been returned.
Getting out.
Go ahead, Mike.
67% of return.
Correct, 67% have been returned right now.
I didn't hear all that either.
Yep. And we should have a higher return rate.
Good. Looking good. Thanks for all your hard work over there and pass that on to your fellow employees.
I will do that, working hard. I do have two other things before the board this morning. I need a motion to approve and authorize the board to sign resolution number 741-05-26-2020 for the second half interfund operating transfer for fiscal year 2019-2020 in the sum of $12,500 from the Historic Preservation Fund, that's the 29,000 fund, to the General Basic Fund, which is the 01,000 fund. Effective May 26th, 2020, as recorded in a resolution book four, page 262.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion in a second to authorize the board to sign resolution number 741-05-26-2020 as presented. All those in favor say aye. Aye opposed, nay. Motion carried.
My last thing for today is I need a motion to approve and authorize the chair to sign the certificate of cost allocation plan for fiscal year 2019 with cost advisory services to provide consulting services to recoup federal monies. In years past, we would have done everything. They would have come here, but because of the pandemic, they requested that we do everything via email. So we're asking today to have you sign this, this cost allocation plan. And what that amounts to is they take a look at our square footage, the salaries and everything, and the pendros is also included in that. We look at the insurance, the workers' comp premiums. We look at everything to try and recoup money from the federal government for those services.
I'll move.
Motion in a second to approve and authorize the chair to sign the certificate of cost allocation plan for fiscal year 2019 as presented. All those in favor say aye. Aye opposed, nay. Motion carried.
That's all that I have for the board today. Thank you.
Thank you and keep up the good work over there.
Thank you.
For at least another couple of weeks anyway.
Without a doubt.
Okay, Lisa, any visitors on the local access or on the Zoom that would like to chime in at this time? Ryan is not here yet, or Ben is not here yet, I guess. And Luann, no, are we waiting for Luann? There's some, we're waiting for Lanny for yours also, correct?
I can do everything except the.
Okay, would you like to do that? We can get some of that out of the way.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Calendar this week. Tomorrow morning, Wednesday, May 27th at 9:00 a.m. is a high-risk conference call for Larry. On Thursday, May 28th at 9:00 a.m. is a regional planning affiliation Zoom meeting for Jack and Larry. And at 11:00 a.m. that morning is a CSEI board meeting for Jack, and I assume that's gonna be by Zoom as well, but I haven't heard. Friday, May 29th at 7:00 a.m. is a McCogan Leadership Team meeting by Zoom for Larry. And at noon is a workforce Iowa office hours conference call for Jack. Monday, June 1st at 6:00 p.m. are the public here, is the public hearing for McCogan on their urban renewal plan changes. Tuesday, June 2nd will be primary election day. Our regular meeting will be that day at 9:00 a.m. And at 4:30 that afternoon, Jack has a Mississippi Valley workforce area meeting. And that's to be announced as to how they're gonna do that. This, I guess, the only business until we're waiting for Lanny's to talk about the emergency salt business loan. Do you want to do something with that?
Well, the two individuals that I have reviewing, both of them said they would consider it, it depended on the number of applications. If we get 25 or 30, they just don't have time to do that. But if we have five or 10, they might be willing to. So, and we also talked last week about the revolving loan fund committee. I didn't talk to any of them, okay?
I didn't, I didn't have a chance to talk any of them either. Is Nick, I see you're on here. We were at the point of appointing a committee. I know Roger had some couple of names that he had thrown out there.
Yes, so Roger, at least related to the revolving loan committee, I think Roger offered himself up as a representative from the revolving loan fund committee. He also made some recommendations as it related to going now, now the name is escaping me, but representative from Andrew, he was suggesting.
Kathy Till, Patty Hoffman, also recommended Wendy.
So did he contact these people and they're willing to serve?
I have no idea.
Yeah, I know Wendy and Patty Hoffman are willing to serve. I don't know about the recommendation from, from Andrew though.
And how do we feel a point about appointing appointments from the current revolving loan committee?
Well.
I don't know what's fair. I don't know what to do here. I know.
I think it would be good to ask some of them if they would be willing to do that. At just so six times, and we have to do it in the next couple of days and then have a special meeting to appoint them.
Look, we appoint three or four. Do you want five people on it?
That's what we passed.
Oh, we passed for five people.
Any recommendations for the program? Is Wendy on?
No.
No, not today.
I would move that we table action on appointing committee so we have some opportunity to visit with some people. And maybe we could have a special Zoom meeting sometime later this week.
I'd second that.
A motion in a second to table the appointments to the revolving loan emergency loan program until we have further vetted possible committee members, committee appointments. All those in favor say aye. Aye opposed, nay. Motion carried.
Holiday weekend wasn't a really good time to.
No, I tried to call a few people and that didn't work very well and I don't think they wanted the answer. Um, and Lanny's not gonna be on until
10 or 10:15.
10 or 10:15, okay.
We could probably recess till 9:30 and should be here in a minute.
We have a public hearing. At this time, we will take a brief recess. All right, good morning again, and we are back and we will reconvene at this time. And we're joined by Ben Coburn, our Jackson County zoning administrator.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So we received this application in late April. This is from Ryan Brothers Port. They have an existing park confinement out there that is, the capacity is 2,480 head of finishing swine or 992 animal units of this original confinement. It did not meet the criteria for the master matrix review that counties can engage in. So this new building is expanding capacity, same, same capacity, 1,480, 992 animal units. So that is what's triggering our master matrix review, pushing it past 1,000. The new confinement barn will be 110 feet by 190 feet structure with an eight foot deep concrete pit for manure storage. As of last Friday and actually as of today, we have not received any public comments in opposition or in support of this proposed park confinement building.
First of all, Ben, do we need to open the public hearing first before you explain all that?
I suppose, yeah, for, that makes sense.
Do I have a motion?
Motion open public hearing, second.
Have a motion in a second, open the public hearing on the Ryan Brothers Port Animal Confinement. Does anyone have any comments? Criticisms or concerns?
So you said the, the original one did not meet that criteria?
Exactly, yep, so.
Has that been fixed?
It was at 992 when it was built, so they intentionally come under those thresholds so they don't have to, you know, work with the county. But this new building is part of the same operation, it's an expansion, so that's what's.
So they combine, combine them and then they're over the threshold?
Yep. Um, if you, I sent you the application electronically. It was 91 pages long, so I just printed the stuff I gave you physically. It's just the master matrix store, so in order to say paper, I just sent the entire application electronically. But there are some calculations on there that show you know, the new capacity, so, and that's what's pushing it. This new one is pushing it past 1,000 animal units.
And you said we haven't received any any complaints or any supporting letters or comments?
Nope, not a single phone call, email, nothing, so I was, you know, I thought we might just because it is, I think, within a mile of the west part of Weezer Lake, you know, so there's they're not close, but and they're not, you know.
In the same watershed?
What's that?
Probably in the same watershed?
It's possible, yeah, it looks, just looking at some of the.
So if they were, they were possibly have a situation where the manure did a dump or whatever, it would end up in the lake?
Um, I would. Um, I would. You know, I would say that possibility, not an expert in that area, but if you look on their. On their supplementary documents, they explain where they're measuring these separation distances from. And one of those requirements is a minimum separation distance from water source, which is this. Free directly east, and I would say that definitely, you know, eventually meets up with.
Oh, right, there's a lake, okay.
If you kind of.
So if you go back to that building, if you would please. I mean, just to confirm what we're looking at, so we're, I'm saying that white building is the current confinement building, correct?
Exactly.
Okay, and the other building is proposed to go to the northeast, west. I'm guessing that the south is, or the bottom of the screen is south and the right side of the screen is east, is that right?
Roughly be able to kind of put a.
Yep.
Line where that's going to be just kind of in there. Where that one.
So slightly further away.
Kind of retention pond below that or something, just in case.
They require, no.
Thing is, I don't know how it ever get out of a eight-foot-deep pit, but unless it overflowed, but I don't know how that, that would be.
If it flooded, I mean, if there was somewhere that the water could get into the tank, then it would push the rest of it out. But I don't know if that's the situation there.
Yeah, I'm not sure. This is on possibly, you know, one of the highest points in Jack County. If you're up in that area, that part of the county is pretty high elevation, so it is on, I guess, I call the ridge. Going out there, I did a site visit. A couple of weeks ago with the Iowa DNR environmental specialists, the pork producer and their consultants who put together their application. He got a crossbow Iowa, so. I'm, I think it was pretty, it was pretty high. But again, I mean, doesn't mean that, you know, if there were some kind of leak or spill, it's all, you know, going down.
Yeah.
So.
So did the DNR or any of the pork producers, union or whatsoever, commission, whatever you want to call it, they have any concerns here or is this normal? And did it, I guess, you got the, you got the master matrix here, it passed the master matrix apparently, right?
Their self-reported numbers indicate that it does pass and I can go through, I can go through each category or just the major ones, which I consider the first ten to be the most important. Have they really separation distances that the county can, you know, actually verify and say, well, you think this, this house is, you know, thirty-seven hundred feet? I've got this house that's only two thousand, like, I'm not saying that's the situation here, but, you know, those are the ones that we want to verify the most. Everything else is just, you know, based on the application materials, here's their design plan, here's how their. Form newer pit is going to be constructed. Those are just matter of fact, you know, either they have them or they don't and they are, are, or are not claiming points in those categories.
So where does all this manure go when it leaves the pit?
Sure, so they will be applying it to fields, possibly this one. But if you look at, let me just check here. You're looking at items. Thirty through. Thirty-five, I put them in my report, but on your master matrix. They are claiming no points for. Any of those categories, which relates to the application of the manure to, to the fields. And. Let's just see here. From that section. So if they are doing. The minimum separation distance for land application of manure injected or incorporated on the same day as application, that separation distance is zero. So if they had a house that had the, you know, the maximum separation distance and they claimed one hundred points for. The separation between the confinement facility itself and that house, they can apply manure. Up to that point, as long as it's, you know, injected and or incorporated on the same day as the plant. So, I mean, yeah.
Do they inject it now or not?
That's, that's what they will plan on, oh, for their existing facilities. I, I don't know because, you know, they didn't have to go through the master matrix, but I would assume it's similar just because they're indicating that that's what they're going to be doing. If you look at. Let's see here.
Even the ventilation now, I know there was criteria for ventilation. And that consists of just some fans, I suppose.
Like a filter.
Yeah, filter, there was supposed to be a filter.
Yeah, real quick, so they are claiming thirty points for manure injected or incorporated on the same day as applied to a field. So as far as the, the air filtration, they are claiming no point for that, which indicates they aren't installing any filters as item number four.
No points for air quality annoyance.
Yeah, that's through the University of Minnesota, the offset model.
There it is, emergency containment, no points playing.
One thing they are doing is their, their wet, dry. Feeding and watering system that is, you know, apparently something they can reduce manure volume generated. They're claiming twenty-five points for that, so as far as, you know, emergency storage or capacity in the event of overflow. They are claiming no point for that, but, you know, presumably, one would argue that they're feeding and watering system. Have less.
I mean, there's a watering system there, something would malfunction with that watering system that would overflow more tanks. And with no other containment, then it's a mile away from Leisure Lake, then that could create, it could kill every fish in there and just one.
I'm guessing there has to be some kind of.
Overflow.
Monitoring system on the whole building that it's something malfunctions. Be it electricity, be it automatic generator starting up, be it a water issue or something that rest, you know. It's to the point nowadays that a red light, light will flash in your bedroom if, if something goes wrong with that building. I, my whole thing about this, and we talked about this so many times at the state level that, and, you know, the, in western Iowa and other places. There's many of these confinement buildings, I mean, many, but I, I just feel that the DNR should be more, or somebody that knows something a little, you know. I mean, we can sit and talk about it all day and I can say, well, you know, I'm not going to, I'm not going to say these guys can't have a confinement building, it's a DNR says it's okay and. And the, and the pork commissioner, whoever, who am I to say I'm, you know?
They should be the experts at it.
Well, I would think, yeah, that's my point.
Yeah, and my point is, I mean, all of these are in here, but whoever checks it? I mean, who, who goes out there and looks at, who, who checks the cattle or the hogs or whatever, you see if they're at the weight number and how many hogs are there? I mean, it's just, okay, and. Okay, I won't say his name, was in here and they said, well, if it's over this amount, then it has to be over like that and we'll change that, we'll change it to. To be under, under a thousand pounds and he's doing right in front of us and I'm, okay, so it doesn't matter, he's going to do whatever he wants. Who, who's going to follow up with it?
And that's the argument at the state level.
Before that, he said, no, everybody's fine with it. Well, the next meeting we had, we had half a dozen people in here. It already had one manure spill, killed all the fish in the neighbor's pond and stuff and, you know, so have all the neighbors been notified? Has Leisure Lake been notified?
They don't get notified other than public notice, so. There is, not that they claimed any for this, but there is. A section, you can claim some points if you secured a written approval from everybody within a one-mile radius. Nobody's going to go out and do that because a one-mile radius is, you know, in this area, it wouldn't be allowed, but you could potentially touch the Leisure Lake subdivisions and get, you know. You know, fifty properties within a mile and.
Well, if you're going the way the crow flies there, yeah.
Yeah, plus, I think that's only. Worth, it's not worth a lot of points.
So they can pass this master matrix, that's the whole point of our discussion out there. They could, they can pass this master matrix with complying with.
Without being.
Ten, ten points.
Yeah.
Out of fifty, yes.
And that's been discussed years ago too, I mean, why is it so lax? It's like. There's no containment there, but if you have, you know, fresh air, then it's okay, but you can dump them there or somewhere.
Yeah, you can get twenty, twenty to twelve points if you somehow secure the approval of every property owner, which I suppose if you were, you know, owned many, many acres. And you were putting the confinement on your own land, like you could technically claim, you know, twenty points.
So how many, I mean, how many gallons or whatever of manure are generated from this thing, how much land do they have and how many, how much can you put on each acre? And, I mean, you can only put it on in the fall and spring, I think, not when you got crops in. So is there enough storage there? There's a lot of unanswered questions.
Sure.
And one question came to me a couple of years ago, or maybe a year ago, I was having lunch in this. And this guy was sitting there and I'd met him before, but this is, you don't know anybody needs any manure and I'm like, well, no, and he says, well, my neighbor's got a lot of it and. We're just trying to get rid of it. We put a lot on our farm already, but we're pretty much saturated, so where do you live? He told me, I pulled our records of the thing and imagine deep creeks, the nitrate are really high in that area and that's where it's at. So it's kind of ending up in the water because they can only put so much on so much land, it's just. I, I think there's needs to be more planning or more questions asked, I guess.
I understand, you were asking about the volume of the manure storage. So. They're looking at four thousand nine hundred sixty head finishing hogs.
Total.
Yeah, they're saying basically a twenty-five percent reduction in manure volume, which is, you know, apparently. Five hundred thirty-five thousand six hundred eighty gallons of manure, so.
A lot of manure.
So, so. Dry feeders, one point two gallons per day per animal. Wet, dry would reduce that to twenty-nine gallons, so if you're twenty-five percent reduction. Basically, take forty-nine sixty five point nine. Fourteen-five hundred gallons.
So, and so my question would be, how many acres, how many acres of land do you need to disperse that? Sure, and do they have that kind of land or do they have contracts with their neighbors to buy from or use it or? I mean, they're doing something now, but can they double it and still be good?
I would think that would be a requirement for the DNR to.
Manure management plan is supposed to be submitted with it. Is there one in here?
They don't, they don't specify, you know, the location of the field, so they probably just sell it. And, you know, provided, I mean, there's. You know, that, that's where they, they probably cover these separation distances, you know, the way it's going to be applied, injected or incorporated on the same day application. You don't even need a buffer area.
Well, this area is about as remote as you're probably possibly get.
For that, the water part of it, that's.
So. I guess I've, I've got my report here as far as some of the separation distances, if you want me to kind of go over those using Beacon. You know, I can indicate where the nearest.
I think there's good separation.
Yeah, I mean, those, that's where they accumulate the vast majority of the points is those first ten categories, so. You know, conveniently, they're right there, so they meet the maximum per separation of dwelling for a. Confinement building with covered and formed manure storage structures that require separation from a residence, business, church or school is. One thousand eight hundred seventy-five feet, so on top of that amount, there are an additional. Twelve hundred fifty-one feet away and that, that closest one there, you can see on the map, it's just to the northeast. The closest public use area. Is Bernard, in the city of Bernard, so not even in Vax County. As far as like anything within that minimum, I would say, I think technically the closest public use area. Is probably. Let's see here, the LaSoya Wildlife Management Area, about two point seven miles away. I think the Ozark Wildlife Area is three miles.
So how far is it from Leisure Lake?
One, about a mile, I can. But the closest point of Leisure Lake, it looks like it's about, it's over a mile there. The lake itself, which, you know, hardly doesn't matter since the creek there, you know, about. Over a mile and a half.
So the creek's fairly, I mean, when you go up the valley, the creek gets pretty close to where they're at.
Yeah, the creek that they're indicating is. Right here.
And there's water or not all the time?
Um, I don't know.
It don't look like there's enough drainage here for a creek to, where, where's it start, where's it coming from?
There is a ton neighboring property here. But just on farther north.
That's on the Lamy property?
Yes.
And there was no, again, no, nothing from them or anyone else around the neighborhood there about the public hearing or comments or. Well, it's obvious if, if something did happen there, they'd have to pay the consequences for sure. I give them a lot of credit to have the confidence to do something like that, the way things are right now.
They meet the maximum separation distances from an institution such as. Hospital, church. So I think the closest one I found was St. Oasis Church in Gary Owen. I think there's also some home businesses in that area, if you want to count those as commercial enterprise, otherwise Jimmy D's Restaurants, Leisure Lake. It's just over two miles on the east side there. Separation from a water source, they could only claim five of a possible thirty due to that creek. Dish there on neighboring that property. Separation from a right-of-way, it's more than three hundred feet from the nearest thoroughfare, Gary Owen Road, put it on the map there. Separation from a critical public area. They're counting the town of Bernard as the closest, I consider Ozark to be the closest. Again, it's outside the, you know, maximum requirement, but when you look on the, this would be, I think it's. Chapter sixty-five, or chapter five. Five sixty-seven, chapter sixty-five of Iowa code. They count wildlife areas as critical public areas, so, you know, my view, they're self-reported, I think they should have. Could have put Ozark on there instead of city Bernard, but it's still outside.
What about Leisure Lake? There's three hundred and twenty homes there.
Right, it's, it's private, this is basically just considering these recreational areas, so, yeah, I, I think.
You got that many homes a mile away from it, it's just like.
Sure.
And it's all down. I mean, to me, I think it should have a retention pond there of some sort, some way to.
But can we force them to do that?
No, that's what I say, so.
Their blessing, we don't have a thing to say about it, really.
Yeah, that's what we talked about many times, I mean.
It's the item seven, separation from private well, the close to private well is on the same property, part of that, it's the operation. It does meet the minimum distance of one hundred feet, but it is less than two hundred feet, which is why you need to earn those points. So they get zero for separation from a private well. Separation from a sinkhole or a major water source or ag drainage well, the closest known. Uh, well, the closest known ag drainage well is in Cedar County. The nearest sinkhole is seven thousand two hundred and sixty feet. To the northeast of the barn, seven miles away. The nearest major water source is Lloydup Creek, uh, two point two five miles to the northeast. Uh, so the minimum requirement for that is one thousand feet. Meeting the maximum above that of twenty-five hundred.
So that little creek doesn't count as a water?
Not as a major water source. Yeah, like you could, you know, if a major water source is Lloydup Creek, you could, you know, put it up. Along by, you know, a small stream or creek that isn't technically a major source and.
So this, so this actually, that small creek would run through Leisure Lake, through, sorry, Leisure Lake and then run into Lloydup Creek?
Eventually.
With all the hills and terrain that we have, it's going to be hard to find a spot that there ain't a creek or a.
Yeah.
Water source a mile away.
That's right.
Um. See, number nine, separation from a confinement facility. Uh, this apparently does not apply to the existing structure on the property. Uh, so the closest one. Uh, is, uh, point eight-three miles to the northeast of this, uh, uh, facility. The DNR, DNR database doesn't show anything there. Um, so there is a other confinement in section twenty-seven of Butler Township. Uh, so that is one point three miles away. Uh, item ten, separation from a high-quality water or protected water area. Um, it also meets the max separation for this. Uh, the closest is a high-quality water resource, unnamed creek. In section eleven of Butler Township, which eventually meets up with Lloydup Creek, uh, in section seven of our three township, so.
I'm going back to number nine. What, why is the current confinement building not considered?
Um. Let's see. Um, so they go off of the DNR citing atlas, uh, which shows the nearest confinement facility.
So they can't see the one set next to it? Is that what you're telling me?
Apparently that doesn't count, which I guess you would say if it's under, it was under one thousand units. Oh, it wouldn't count initially. So by creating this one, now it's over a thousand, but it's all part of one confinement operation.
So the one that's there gets added on to this one? Or is that just kind of over there by itself?
They're going to get added together now.
They get added together.
At this point.
Yeah.
And it's approved.
So I, yeah, I, I don't know if that's a way for them to try to say, like, we want to see, we want to stop seeing people creating separate parcels. Or, you know, this building, that's only going to have, like, nine hundred, then the next one has nine hundred. Uh, you know, and call them separate operations under different LLCs or different payment numbers. Try to say, you know.
And they've been doing that.
Yeah.
All of this has been debated so many times in the last five years.
So are they taking more property off the tax rolls then?
I, I don't know any of the particular of that. There are a few, um, you know, questions here as far as applying for tax credits for, you know, family farm operation or homestead. Uh, you can get more points for being able to do those, uh, added economic value to the local area. They don't pay any points for that. Definitely job of the certain. Type.
Well, they've figured out a way to say that pork production is not a farm commodity, so they don't have to pay tax on that. And I don't know what you would call raising that many hogs is not being a product of the land. And that's just another little thing that we go back and forth with in Des Moines. It's like, how can they do that? They don't pay any taxes to maintain the roads. They're running semis in and out, uh, I mean, on, probably on daily basis when you have that. Yeah, this is sore subject.
Yeah, I mean, I, I.
With no control.
Yeah, with no control. A DNR says, yeah, okay, but you need to run it by the supervisor. We don't, we can, all three of us can vote it down and it doesn't matter. It's still going to happen. That's the, the part that just hurts everybody. Or at least tax them, so we got some money to fix the roads and bridges that they're using. And I'm picking on you.
No, I, I, Larry, I, I think, um. You know, that's, uh, I think those are fair, fair views. It's something you guys go over every time, you know, during conference or. Different time of the year now.
Yeah.
We do it in my, so this is a paper tiger, so.
And why they don't consider Leisure Lake with three hundred and twenty homes there, a community, that's just wrong too.
Okay. I think, uh, I guess I do, you know, my recommendation, uh, just want to note there's one discrepancy pretty minor. Um, they only claim two and a half points for their closure plan, uh, which should be for five points. So, um, they have earned five hundred and fifteen total points on that. So when we, uh, you know. Make our decision to officially score this and pass our recommendation, uh, it should, uh, you know.
So what is exactly the closure thing?
Uh, I think, I don't know. I sent an email to electronic copy. I don't have it with me right now, but. There would be a closure plan.
Closure plan, five points, okay. Um, you're supposed to have ten.
Five, I think, for that one. Um, they get five for the emergency action plan, five for the closure plan. Uh, which it, I mean, both of those, uh, they also have a plain ten points for a submitted worker protection and safety plan. Uh, so that was all part of that, the ninety-one page, uh, application.
So you said the closure plan should actually have ten points?
But it should have five.
Okay.
They only, they only claimed two and a half for whatever reason. So we just, you know, I called the guy who put it together. He said, you know, I asked him like, the reason why it's different, but no, that's a mistake. So it's just a oversight and a scuff.
Any other input from the, the public? We still have a public hearing open, I believe. Anyone from the public?
I'd move we close the public hearing.
Second, a motion and a second, close the public hearing. Um, on the master, master plan for the Ryan Brothers. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, nay. Motion carried. Um, is there action due on this then to approve or disapprove?
Yeah, so I have a letterhead that's only the signature of chairman, uh, so that I can send this off. Um, I guess, you know, we know what the score is. Um, I verified, uh, all those numbers as far as separation distances. And I noted the only discrepancy that they should have completed, but declared more points than they actually did. So. Um, you know, but, you know, you're more than welcome to vote, you know, the way you want or submit any kind of comments. As far as, you know, how this, you know, system reflects on, I guess, industry, you know. You know, what's, uh, you know, folks have to deal with, I guess, as it relates to on confinement, but.
So when you're saying the total score was eight eighty?
That's the maximum you can earn. The.
Score you need to pass is four forty.
Fifty percent.
Fifty percent.
There you go.
And what they have.
Problem right there.
Five fifteen. So the consultant told me this is the highest he's ever had.
Awesome.
So I'm like, congratulations, I guess, you know, so. No.
So who you work with in the DNR?
Uh, Paul Patiti, Pat Spencer is the head honcho as far as like, he sees every application for one of these. And he's, you know, he verifies the scores and make sure everything's submitted correctly from the applicant and from the counties. Um, as far as locally, like the environmental specialists that comes down. Uh, someone from the Manchester Field Office will, will come down for this. So I think, I think it's. Oh, that's me the name. I can get that. It's Brian Jorgensen or something. Um, I can, I can let you know that.
Okay. I mean, this has been going around and around for years and, I mean, they feel the same way. I, I mean, this seems just almost like a joke. Qualifications are.
Yeah, they scored, scored that kind of score and, and the recommendation is to.
I guess we're having a.
Where do you want to go here?
Lunch in here at noon.
A lot of good battle do, yeah.
Way too many lobbyists against any clean water thing.
So you need an application to have authorized the chair to sign?
We need a.
Motion, yeah.
We need a motion to approve the expansion application.
So moved.
Have a motion and a second to approve the expansion application for the Ryan Brothers Pork Animal Confinement. All those in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed, nay. Motion carried.
You want to sign and base there?
I'll get that together first.
Today's date, you went on here?
Yes.
There you go. Thanks, Ben.
Now, uh, this is due by Friday, so I will get everything put together and send it off as soon as possible. It's, uh, on this, I'm really didn't mess anything up too bad, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
We're back.
Anything on the Delarne property yet?
Um.
On the other new senses?
Uh, waiting for court to open, uh, back up so we can file these, uh, in brackets.
What about that?
Have you talked to Gary at all lately?
Not lately, no.
Tell Gary to put this ten-foot fence up, will you?
Okay.
Um, Green Island.
We can't see.
Needs mode, looks terrible again.
Green Island, all that stuff on the road down there. That cleaned up.
There's some garbage there, I think. Um, I gotta meet with someone and they'll be so awesome that way this week.
I had, um, Steve Trader went down, take a look at it. He thought he knew who dumped it.
Oh, I saw the picture. I did see the picture you sent.
I don't know if it's been cleaned up yet.
Okay.
There's a lot of stuff.
Sure.
Big stuff.
All right, I'll take, I'll take a look at that.
Maybe go through some if you can, if you can get a name on it that we can mail in, of course.
Okay. Good.
Well, we need to pursue that. Yeah, they, we can't just dump it in the roadway.
I'll show you a picture of that?
No.
I'll show you after you're done there.
Thank you.
Um, I do not see Lanny on yet, correct? Becky? You've been patiently waiting?
Yep.
Absolutely.
Okay, so I'm on for all things today. The first is the twenty E agreement with Deacon County. I did bring extra copies if anybody needs, um, a new copy of that. Um, we had a joint meeting, it didn't change. We had a joint meeting with them. They wanted to make updates that we requested including, um, under number seven, we just wanted to make sure that we weren't. Close to the sixty-fourth school at the end of the year, um, that they would need to adjust for that. So they did have that language in there. Other than that, everything was, um, updated as we requested. The next step of this would actually be for, in order to adopt this, it's adopted by reservation. About the same resolution, which I talked to Cindy last week. We felt like it would be appropriate for this hour in that reservation. This actually gets filed with the secretary of state office, hopefully we'll discuss that on, you know, at any time by reservation. So if everything is good with the twenty-eight E, I would email Cindy this morning and I would just draft the resolution. For ease of them possibly being able to, um, pass it at their next week's board meeting along with this. And then we could do the same on Tuesday.
Wonderful.
Sounds good. And you did have, uh, some discussion about the wages as of January.
Yeah, there would be no year change.
Okay, so we, we're not responsible for that part.
So I guess if everything's okay with the twenty-eight E, I guess the motion would just need to, um, be presented. And then I will correspond back with Deacon County to try to show up for the resolution.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the, uh, twenty-eight agreement with Deacon County regarding the assistant engineer position. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, nay. Motion carried. Means everything on the paper, ready about it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, the next thing is the renewal of the county engineer employment contract. It does expire June thirtieth of this fiscal year. Um, I did prepare a standard two-year agreement expiring in twenty twenty-two. If you're going to, um, extend it. The only thing that changed was the salary for fiscal year twenty twenty-one going forward. Um, so it's just open for discussion. Um, I did bring copies of it and you may need, this is a new draft of two-year agreement. And then it just changed the dates and the salary and everything. That is up for your discussion and how you'd like to proceed with that.
Any discussion or input?
My question, the engineer do a.
Pardon?
I, no, no.
Well, the only comment that I have is, um, I think it's time that we part ways. I'm really disappointed that we've waited so long to try to find somebody to come to the office. Clark has talked about how shorthanded they were. Last March, we added a hundred thousand dollars to their budget so they could hire somebody. We had to approach him last fall to even get a job description started so that we could even apply. Or advertise for the position. Where a year later, um, and there's nobody on board. We're just now getting things ready so that July first, we'll have a part-time assistant county attorney. And I think it's time that we sought a new county attorney.
Engineer.
And I would move that we do not renew the contract and that Clark be finished with Jackson County. At the last day of June, workday of June of twenty twenty.
I guess I echo the same. As Jack. I mean, we've been trying to get more things done. We have, we have the highest number of bridges, deficient bridges in Iowa. At twenty percent. The state is at ten percent. Ten percent of all the bridges in Iowa are deficient in the nation. And there's fifty states. So we are at the bottom. The state's at the bottom and we're at the bottom of the bottom. And it just seems like it's just business as usual. We do a couple of bridges and a couple more start falling down. The one that, this recent one is, I mean, staying, and it wasn't even on our list. So I question how good our inspections have been. To have one almost completely fail before it's even put on the list. I, I just feel we need to go in a different direction.
I, I think that we need a fresh start.
Yes.
And I don't, I think that, um, we've made all kinds of suggestions over the past and, um, to no avail. And, um, uh, the general public have not been happy. I haven't been happy. And I want our people to get the service that they need. And I don't believe that they're doing that at present time.
Well, we certainly have had many conversations with, um, personnel. To the community, the residents of Jackson County. So I have a motion and a second to not renew the contract as presented and. Clark to be finished and move thirtieth of twenty twenty. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carried.
Okay, so per the terms of his current agreement, um, written motion provided to him. I'm wanting the action taken on the board.
Something you do, do we do it or?
It's up to you. If you want me to draft the order and find it, um, it should be presented.
What's the timeframe?
Within thirty days, right?
Well, you have to do it within the next week.
This week.
This week. You can accomplish that. We need a motion.
Um, I would say we need a motion to send.
So moved. Second.
A motion and a second to writ, uh, right, have Becky write a written motion, uh, regarding his. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, nay. Motion carried.
So this is being broadcast, so when you.
Sure, watch it.
And I think it would be important for us to contact with you to see if they have any suggestion. Repeat. Okay, um, I think. Becky's had some conversation. Um, I had some conversation, um, and see exactly what direction we have to go. So that they're informed that I'm also going. So that they're informed that I'm also going to talk to John, uh, if he may be able to give us some guidance as well.
We definitely have, need some input and we will proceed with that.
Okay, the last thing I have then is I wanted to discuss employee vacations this summer. I've had a lot of questions from employees regarding if they were traveling. What, um, quarantine would be required of them prior to coming back into the place? The Center for Disease Control and Department of Public Health are no longer recommending self-isolation if travel is within state to state. However, they do recommend a fourteen-day quarantine if they, um, return from international travel before returning to the workplace. Um, one thing I felt like a lot of counties have done to offset trying to help employees not wanna take that vacation and not lose their vacation time because they've extended the amount of time they've had to use their P-ten off benefits. Um, most of the counties that I see come through have, um, allowed their employees to extend all their P-ten off benefits by six months through December of this year. So anybody that would lose benefits or have to use them, we're usually on trial between now and December third, if they've extended them for six months. Um, so if an employee had an anniversary date in November, they would have six months from then to use it. I always tend to have it used by November of this year. I feel that's pretty fair. Um, it may help some employees not feel what they have to travel. And it would allow them to actually keep those benefits, but still use them a little bit later if not, so.
I would make that motion to extend it six months.
Did you say six months?
I did, yeah. So it's six months from each employee's anniversary date essentially.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the vacation extension period for six months to be used under the current regulations.
Everybody's would have to be used by June thirtieth of that, next year. December anniversary date, they would have until June, so.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, nay?
Um, and then I would, I would just send an, an internal to the department as it all to travel, that if they have employees that intend to travel internationally, it would be expected.
Okay. Anything else, Becky?
That's all I had. Um, I will prepare the order if you want to stop in time after me.
Sure.
Okay.
I'll be here a little bit.
Okay. Thank you.
Also, maybe on your way by, we have, we do not have the claims in here, so we'll be. Tell Lisa we need to have them, or Shelley or whoever. Okay, where am I? Did I skip something? Where am I at? Thank you. Okay, so we are, if you can find it back. Oh, we were under Luann's business, that's where that was, okay. Uh, discussion of public action on the emerg, nope, discussion of public action on the softball field lease with Macogota. So, Lanny, um, I guess we were, we read it. Um, I don't know if there's any changes or how much discussion that you had with Gerald. Is Gerald on also?
Gerald is on.
Okay, Gerald. So there was one paragraph in there that, uh, that was not in the previous one. Then I guess we really didn't know what it meant.
Basically, what, what we're trying to do is to, uh, bring attention to something we've observed over, uh, a number of years with RVers in the, uh, in, in, in the area. Uh, it's been brought to my attention that some of those RVers have been parking very close to the playground areas where kids play, and we wanted to make sure that when anyone, uh, hosted any type of activity or event, that we were all conscious of the fact that maybe we need to rope off that area so that RVers did not park in that area so that kids wouldn't necessarily be in harm's way from vehicles. It's just, uh, uh, something that we both, uh, the city and the county need to be aware of that, you know, when we open up those areas for RVers, there's no one really monitoring where they're parking. And so if that's the case, and maybe if we were to put something like caution tape around a certain distance, kids who are on the sliding board or on the swings aren't gonna run the risk of being too close to an RV.
Okay, I guess, since, since, uh, we didn't know what that meant, it says to cordon off the playground areas from the parked vehicles. We didn't know if that was a concrete wall. We didn't know, because we didn't have any discussion on this prior to receiving this lease agreement.
No.
So, a, a wall or, or a fence or a chain-like fence is a lot different than rope or tape.
Right, that's why I use the word corded, just a cord. Something that brought attention to the RVers. You know, I, I basically said if you just use caution tape and wrap it around and stake it off so that, you know, individuals who are backing up vehicles, don't back it too far into the, uh, into the playground area.
Uh, Gerald, what about putting a regular fence in there? That sounds like it's a safety issue.
Um, I. We, we don't have a problem with that. It, it, it's just, it's not our park. We just wanted to draw the attention to the, to the concern. Whatever the solution is, um, you know, we were just looking for the simple solution here.
Okay, Lanny.
My comment is, it's only the five days of the fair that anybody would be in that area. We don't park campers there any other time except for when there's an overflow from our camping already. So I, the expense of going to a full fence, I think at this point in time, you know, maybe fifteen years down the line, maybe, but now I just can't see putting that kind of, and we hadn't been informed that there was even any concern. So from now on, we will just not park anybody there.
We didn't either, uh, yeah. I guess that was our only, uh, question on the lease agreement. I, is fifteen years okay with everybody here? Or shall we be revisited in ten? Or how does everybody feel about that?
I don't have, I don't have a problem with fifteen years.
Okay. And yeah.
You look like you're at the Macogota caves.
Yeah, yeah. I don't know if you heard, uh, I found a snake under my desk one day, a couple weeks ago. So keep an eye if any snakes start slithering into the cave, so I, I make sure I turn around.
Is that where your desk is? Out the caves?
No, actually, I stood up in the office, uh, a couple weeks ago and there was a fourteen-inch garter snake under my desk. We have no idea how it got in the building, but.
Probably a gift from one of them.
Yeah, probably got a lot of friends, you know?
Uh, we think it got in from the basement, so all the ladies are walking on eggshells around here right now.
Reason to be. I'm not a big snake lover. Okay, I think that was our only concern. Otherwise, I don't believe we have an issue with the lease at all. Uh, it, it sounds to me like a minor issue.
And, and that language doesn't have to be there. I, I just wanted to draw attention to it so that we were all aware, um, you know, someone running something, exhaust going into the area, we don't want kids in that area with exhaust or, or vehicles that might move and the kids back there playing. We just wanted to make sure everyone was aware.
Patients is the key word there. I think you just need to communicate with Lanny and get them to know that, uh, what space needs to be either. I don't think we need a fence. I just think if we put some tape down or something, just, uh, indicate. I know Lanny will do what she's supposed to.
Right. I mean, if it's a, if it's a rolled snow fence or picket fence, whatever it may be, whatever, it's minimal, right, Lanny?
Right, exactly.
That's all I wanted to hear. Okay. Uh, is this, is this?
I would move we approve the lease, uh, with those understandings and authorize the chair to sign in the auditor.
I would second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the, uh, lease agreement with. Fair board, I guess it's with the, uh, city of Macogota then, right?
Yes.
Yep.
And the, and the softball field lease as presented with the understanding of the cordon off playground area is temporary and minimal. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, nay. Motion carried. All right, I thank you both for attending and your time and looks like we're on our way.
Thank you.
Thanks. Is this? I don't know if this is the original or not, but I scribbled on this one. Is there any other work session, uh, business commission reports before us?
I don't have anything.
I know you're still working diligently with the Iowa workforce and, um, I see Conservation had a meeting.
I, I guess the only thing I would ask, um, is your regional meeting last week, did you get a lot of questions answered? Did you think it was worthwhile to have that meeting and?
Um. I, I got, yeah, I think so. I, I, I got informed. I got informed and, uh, it was good information. It was very calm.
That's good.
And. No, Jack was busy, but, uh, no, it was, it was a good meeting, I think, and it appears that everybody's on the same page now, somewhat. Or getting closer.
Better than they were.
Yeah. So appreciate that, you work with that. Any other unfinished business? I guess I was gonna ask you earlier, Larry, when you had the Iris meetings, I know it's coming up. Is there any still, anything coming for, I know it was still on the agenda up at the, uh, Spruce Creek, yeah. Water project.
Yeah, I'm not sure. I'll find out tomorrow exactly where we're at on that. It sounds like the grant's been submitted. I guess we're the only one applied for it, so I think everything's moving forward.
Hopefully that.
I was thinking they said you were the, I, I was thinking that, um, uh, Lori said you were only one that qualified for that, for that.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, so that was, she said, that was great news.
Becky did your.
Me, me, my, oh, there's one.
Yeah. Media, media. Okay, any other business before the board this morning? Looks like it's starting out to be the best of the day. It sounds a little.
This is from our conservation meeting. Uh, my neighbor joined us. We looked at the buildings on the south side of the property and I'm still just trying to figure out what to do with the old barn and some of that stuff. And, uh, the neighbor brought up, there's one like five acres that got sprayed, so it looks, all the grass is dead. They were concerned about that. Now, there's five thousand dollars worth of wildflowers and stuff were seeded down and they just filled the grass, so. So a couple years, it'll be whole wildflowers where all that area was, so that'll be a nice addition to part two.
I've, uh, I've heard that process and I've tried that process at my place for eleven years and I didn't do it right. So you have to get, kill it first. And then you gotta put the, the wildfires, that is a process, okay. If I'd have followed a little better, I'd have some myself, but, good, that's a good deal.
Yes, good to see, really happy with Nathan, that he was very is really looking at a lot of different things.
He certainly is pleasant.
Yeah.
Yeah, I talked to him last week there too, for a little bit, and we were talking about the old ramp, and I actually visited Spruce Creek area this weekend, um, just to see, and there was probably, in Spruce Creek itself, there was probably fifteen to twenty campers in there. You know, they're cleaning it up. Um, cleaning up as they can the best they, they need grass to grow now, basically. After all the mud's kinda cleaned up, they need some grass to grow and hopefully that's gonna take off. The prediction of the river is supposed to stay down, so.
It's good.
Help us out. I know, I think they're having a few issues with some of the electrical.
Oh, for the campsites.
Yeah, so we'll have to work that out.
An issue with the water heater. They had a temporary one in there.
Shower.
Trying to, yeah, to get all that up and running. It's in good hands, so they should.
It seems that he's working very hard at it, so appreciate that. Anything else?
I move adjourn.
Motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Nay. Meeting adjourned. Thank you.